Good evening and welcome to the January 2nd, 2019, meeting of the Milton School Committee. As is our tradition, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, we have a very dedicated agenda this evening that I don't have any additions or subtractions from. Anyone else?
Nope.
Good. Is anyone here for a citizen speak? No. Good. Well, so with that, we'll move on to the Chair's report, and I'll turn this over to Member Rosemary, the Chair of our Facilities Advisory Committee. But tonight is, I think, the culmination of a lot of months of work. We're going to hear our first sort of professional assessment of our space needs. And I know a lot of us were in the room when they presented to the Facilities Advisory Committee, but this will give us a chance to ask some sort of high-level questions and to begin the conversation amongst ourselves regarding some of these topics. And I don't imagine any will get solved this evening, but it will give us a chance to start generating our next round of questions and concerns as we move forward. So with that, I'll turn the microphone over to Member Rosemary.
I'd like to welcome our representatives from DRA, John Littman, Carl Francis, and Paul, did you come in? Ed Paul, I forgot your last name.
Paulwood.
Paulwood. Thank you for coming.
Good evening.
Well, thanks for the opportunity.
Welcome back.
As was introduced, we have been working on this for a while, and we certainly welcome your input, particularly on the educational aspects of the issues here. We sort of sum that up at the end. We have been working with the Facilities Advisory Group in their meetings, and we have another meeting scheduled next week with them to sort of refine this, so we're definitely looking for input tonight and feedback. So let me see if I can change these. That's going backwards, forwards?
One to the right.
There we are. So, these were the charges we were given when we were brought onboard in the fall. Your enrollment projections are done by an outside firm. We took that information. We reviewed the information about the available space in existing schools to understand how classrooms in particular are being used nowadays. And then thinking about generalizing the program for an elementary school, and at the same time, we did look at the middle school and high schools to see if there was any excess capacity there. We generate some space needs, which we'll summarize in this presentation, and then we've started to look at options in two different ways. One, more immediate, or what could be termed short-term. You know, what can you do next year, or within the next three years? And then what can be done longer term? And it seems that something needs to be done, or needs to be thought about, at least in the short term, because even if you decided to do a long-term solution, it would take several years to implement by the time things got designed and approved and constructed and/or modified, whatever the case may be. So, and then we're kind of at the last stage now of evaluating options, too. So that's where you come in with some feedback. So just to recap, the existing schools, I'm sure you're all familiar with, but just to show you the inventory, I think we think it's useful to understand the properties that the school committee controls as well. It may be a little different than you understand, so we include the GIS information about property lines at each school. Here's Glover, which is to note that you do have frontage on Canton Ave there, but the existing parking lot to the south sort of is actually parkland or part of the Parks and Recreation Department, and you actually own a part of the, or control a part of the pond there in the back. There is some room to grow in that direction on this site. But obviously, a very tight site, separated by the brook. There are certain implications there that make expansion a challenge on the site. Here is the floor plan, just to summarize. Again, these, actually, three out of the four elementary schools all started off life as a four-section, four-section per grade school. It has changed a little bit over time. The art and music rooms, well, the music room still exists. The art room has been swapped to a smaller space. So there is still sort of an art room at the school. It's a little substandard. And otherwise, there's kindergarten room that's not the equivalent of the other four kindergarten rooms, because it doesn't have a self-contained bathroom, the way kindergarten rooms should, so that the children don't have to leave the room to use the facilities. So that's one issue here. And to summarize it, there are 22 full-size classrooms, and those are for grades one through five, and there are five kindergarten rooms currently at Glover. And one art room, as we say, one music room. And there are no full-size special ed rooms there. There are only the half-size rooms for the programs and the pull-out needs of those, of that population. The Collicott-Cunningham site, again, for those who are familiar there, on Edge Hill Road, it travels back into the wooded area as well. It actually has a little more frontage on Edge Hill, too, to the south there. But again, a very tight site. There's the overall plan. Here's the three levels of the Collicott School. Again, a four-section school that's grown a little bit today to now have 23 classrooms. So some spaces have been converted there, too, with four kindergarten classes. Oh, I should note, too, the average class size we've calculated currently for each of these schools. Currently, right now, kindergarten is 23 students per class on average there, and 24 in grades one through five. That's a figure that we want to talk about as we go through this. On the Cunningham side of the building, again, some spaces have been converted and used a little differently than what was intended originally, partly because of adding preschool there, pre-kindergarten there. So now there are 19 classrooms in grades one through five, and four pre-K and four kindergarten rooms there. And note, only one art room left kind of assigned to, although they do share those facilities. And again, 23 is the average class size in kindergarten there, 22 in the grades one through five. At Tucker, again, a very tight site. The building, three-story building on the site, property lines are clearly delineated there. Three-section school at Tucker, so there are still 15 classrooms for grades one through five, three kindergarten rooms, but with the addition of the pre-K there, there's only, you know, one of the, the music room has been converted, so there's just one of the specials spaces for art and music.
Talk about one of the pre-K rooms.
Yeah, there's a, the reason it's a half is, there are actually two pre-K classes there, but one of the spaces they occupy is really smaller than a full-size classroom, but we do want to include it in the count here. If we go back to the plan, you can see it there, if I can point to that.
It's the green.
Right there, in that corner. It's a, you know, you can see it. There's a full-size classroom across the hall. You can just see relative. It's basically a half-size space. That's why we termed it a one-and-a-half pre-K rooms there. And here's the sort of graphic depiction of the enrollment projections. First of all, if we look at it overall for grades pre-K through five, and the starting point here is back in 2007, 2008, basically when the renovation addition program was completed for all these schools, you can see that the total enrollment back then, 1,873, is now 2,311 in grades pre-K through five, and that's projected to continue to increase looking out 10 years, which is the window that is generally looked at for enrollment projections. Increases another couple hundred students to 2,512. And if we quantify that over time from back in when the schools were renovated till the 10-year projection, that's a 34% increase in the number of students in those grades. It's just elementary, pre-K through five in the system. So, there's definitely needs there currently and needs coming. And if we sort of look at a little finer grade, we broke it down into grades one through five and in kindergarten there. And again, you know, the totals are the same. These are just broken out separately. And again, if you compare it with where we started back in 2007, 2008 to now, you can see the increase in why, you know, there's been pressure, upward pressure in the average class size, and the need to convert some existing spaces is understandable. And the projection is for that to continue to a certain extent. We do want to make note, the kindergarten, which looks fairly flat here, is partly because the organization that does the projections, they generally look at historical trends, you know, how many kids are in first grade, and how many of those become second graders and third graders, and they do that kind of progression. They call it cohort survival through the system. Well, for kindergarten, in order to generate numbers, you have to look at births and see how many kids show up five years later in kindergarten, and also consider move-ins, families moving into the district, and use those factors. Well, that works, you know, if you look back, you know, five years for children that were born, but beyond that, then they have to start projecting births or projecting move-ins. And they're a little more conservative in that regard, and so they generally level that off and don't assume that that continues at the same rate, and that's why the kindergarten line looks very flat there. Whether that's truly what will happen or not, I think you can consider this a conservative projection, but that's why the chart does look like it does. So if we total all these up, in district-wide, there are basically 79 available full-size classrooms for grades one through five right now in use. 16 kindergartens, five-and-a-half pre-Ks, and six art and music classrooms. A total of 107 and a half, you might say, full-size classrooms available throughout the district for the current, and that's the way they're currently used. So if it, you know, was an art room that's been converted, we've included that in this count here. And as we said, district-wide, that averages out to 22 students per kindergarten classroom and 23 in grades one through five. And if we were to project this now, for short-term, we looked out three years, because we, as we said, to do anything will take several years to implement. In the meantime, you can see, you still have space needs in the short-term of roughly 20 more classrooms being needed in order to maintain the program which we assume you'd want to maintain, which says there should be art and music at each of the elementary schools. You know, there should be proper-sized kindergarten classrooms, preschool rooms, and even some full-size special ed rooms. As that population increases, their needs will increase also. So just, again, this is not entirely scientific, but again, based on our understanding of your program, and this is where we want some feedback, but, and at those numbers, you would maintain the current average class sizes, which may or may not be desirable in and of itself, but that's what would happen with the projected enrollments, maintaining those class sizes. Those are the space needs. So roughly 19 and a half or almost 20 additional classrooms being needed, which is about an 18% increase in the number of classrooms that are needed. And if we look at it, and by the way, if you don't do anything, if you just re-divide, reassign those students into your existing classrooms, the numbers go up accordingly here, so that the average class size of kindergarten goes to 23, and the average class size in grades one through five goes to 24. And we should say, that may not sound like a lot when it goes up by one, but remember that these are averages, and it assumes, you know, we're talking about 107 classrooms, so going up by one is 107 more children, more students. And those are averages, and of course, you can't distribute the children, and they don't distribute themselves, you know, by average, and so that means there will be some classes of 28, possibly 29 students, in order to average 24. And there'll be some 25s and 26s in kindergarten in order to average 23, when you look across the district, just so you understand that. So, and then if we look long-term, the need increases. It's now up to 25 and a half classrooms being needed, looking out at that 10-year window. It's not quite as severe as what's happening in the next, you know, three years or so, but it's still significant, obviously. That's a 24% increase over the number of classrooms you have now. It also is very close to being a full-size school. A four-section school would be 20 classrooms of, you know, grades one through five and four kindergartens. So it's almost needing a full, another full elementary school to satisfy the enrollment counts. That's not the only option, of course. Oops, I should go back to the classroom sizes there. And again, if nothing changes, the classroom counts will go up again by another, on average, one student per class, which again is another 100 students, but it means again that to average 25 in grades one through five, there will probably be some 29s, maybe even 30s across the system. And for kindergartens, when it averages 24s, there'll be some 28s, you know, those kinds of numbers, which starts to get, you know, really questionable as to whether, you know, an individual teacher can handle that number of students. And then just a quick check of the middle school property and layout there that you're familiar with. The building is three levels. You can see all of the classrooms. We've colored in the classrooms that are core classrooms, including science rooms here as well, so that when we do our count, there are 45 so-called core classrooms, full-size. In addition, there are seven more specials of art, music, drama, four computer labs or STEM labs, and eight full-size special ed rooms at the middle school, for a total of 64 classrooms. Doing a similar assumption as to what kind of a program would be for, in the short-term, 960 students is the maximum over the next three years, it does call for, at the most efficient use of space, 43 core classrooms, seven, four, and eight. So it's very close to being sort of fully occupied in efficient use right now. And again, these are all based on averages. As one class comes in that's a little bit larger than another, you still have to, you know, assign it to a team. There'll still be nine teams. One team might be a little bit larger than another and so forth. But the average class size will end up somewhere around 22 at these numbers here. So the bottom line is, it's basically an efficiently-used building right now, not a lot of excess space. Likewise, looking at the high school property and the inventory of classrooms there, there are about 54 general classrooms right now, including science. Then you can see the other special spaces, a total of about 74. And again, with high schools, it's much harder to calculate what's needed without doing much more detailed kind of educational programming and all, but just using one guideline that the state puts forth for an enrollment of about 1,074 students, which is again, the projected maximum in the next three years, in the short-term basis, about 68 classrooms are needed. So again, it may seem like there's a little bit of space there, you know, you say six additional classrooms. When we really understand the program and the feedback we've gotten, that's probably not the case. The classrooms are very fully utilized for the most extent. What it probably means is that there are, in your curriculum, more specials, more AP classes, which is appropriate, and they might be slightly smaller than an average class size of 22. So they're using the spaces, and you're offering the curriculum you want to offer and fully utilizing the building, because when we talk to the administration, they don't feel like there's a lot of excess space there. But these numbers kind of confirm that it's certainly not wildly, you know, oversized by any means.
It's not large enough to move a grade.
Certainly not, yeah. So, in sort of a narrative fashion, short-term options are listed here, and these probably don't come as a surprise to you. There are a lot of them you've thought about already before we even came onboard, but these are the ones that we think deserve consideration, not that we're recommending them right now, but we're looking for feedback, and our next step is to get more specific in sort of the pros and cons of each of these. So the first one is do nothing. That is an option. Just allow class sizes to increase. It's pretty straightforward as far as what the consequence would be. It's fairly straightforward as to what the cost would be. If you don't have to hire additional teachers, if you don't have to do additional construction, you might need additional aid here or there, or some of these class sizes get larger, but probably it's a very low-cost solution. It certainly has educational consequences, though, not, you know, that we don't believe you'd recommend some of the class sizes that we're talking about, but it is certainly an option to think about. You could continue to convert some art, music, special spaces in each of these schools and gain some classrooms that way. And obviously, then, art or music goes, so-called art on a cart, music on a cart, goes to the student's homeroom, and the teacher travels and has to take whatever materials he or she needs, you know, with them to make that program continue. In some cases, you could use the stage perhaps for music if it's not lunchtime. That might become a teaching space as an alternative. One fortunate thing you might say in your favor is, computer rooms are becoming less needed as you get more portable technology, as you have in front of you, and so on, that you can put computers on a cart, bring them to a homeroom, and every room can become a computer lab. That's possible nowadays, too, with Wi-Fi and, you know, robust technology throughout a school. We could also consider carving out some space out of the libraries. And again, there's certainly some educational consequence to that. One of the offsetting things you might say is that as we become more reliant on technology, we're less reliant on, you know, hardcover books. We don't need as many books in the library. You can cut down some of the space in that regard. Doesn't always work at elementary level, but certainly the trend is that way. So there's some space perhaps that could be given up to create a classroom. There is construction cost to that, because, and it's not just putting up a wall, you do have to think about lights and sprinklers and ventilation as you subdivide spaces. So there is some cost to that option, but there is a gain. I'll summarize in another slide the spaces you can gain in each of these. We listed utilizing underutilized spaces. As we've noted, there really isn't much underutilized space at the high school or middle school. The Cunningham upper floor is also questionable. This is the top floor that's unoccupied right now, basically used for storage. When we renovated the schools initially, that was a problem to consider using that for elementary school children. The building inspector had an issue with young children being on what in essence is a fourth floor above the egress level. We could revisit that with him. We haven't yet done that. And consider perhaps relocating the library up there, so it's not anyone's full-time homeroom. Maybe it's a library, there's, you know, more adult supervision with them or accompanying them, and then we could convert the existing library spaces into classrooms. That may be the only option really under this item right there that is even remotely possible. Renting modular classrooms is a possibility. It's certainly not desirable from a permanent point of view educationally, but it is done on a temporary basis. It's not as easy as it sounds, though, in the sense of trying to find space on each of these sites to put any significant number of modular classrooms, even for the short-term, because you'd be kind of working against yourself. You're taking away playground space and adding children to the school population where you need more space. You're providing less playground, because most likely the modulators would be located on playground, you know, a space immediately adjacent to the school, so you could connect them to the school. And we wouldn't want to take up parking spaces. That would be sort of counterproductive as well. You're going to be adding staff and adding teachers. You need more parking. To put modulators there would be hurting. And then we listed renting or renovating space, meaning off-site space. Although we don't have any options to bring to you, there might be some in the community. Might. I know there's been some investigation. It may not be a fruitful avenue, but it's worth putting on the table to consider. And of course, some combination, meaning none of these have to be considered in isolation. There could be a little of this and a little of that to get to where you want to be. And then in the long-term solutions, there's another list that again starts with the do nothing. It is a possibility. You try and live with larger class sizes. You could again, you know, try to convert as much space as possible there, and then just live with the consequences again of the class sizes that result from whatever you can. Or there's a category of constructing new space, and that takes a variety of forms, starting with trying to add on to an existing school or schools. But as you saw in the site plans and property line plans we showed, there's not a lot of space at any of these sites to add significant amount of space, because we need to not only expand the buildings, but we should expand the playgrounds and the parking areas to make these work. And at each of these schools, that's a real challenge. A couple options that are not on elementary school sites, but perhaps there's a way to expand the middle school. And to, obviously, to relieve the overcrowding at the elementary school levels, that would require shifting grades or reconfiguring grades. The most logical would be bringing the fifth grade up to the middle school level, so that the elementary's now become K through four, and the middle school becomes five through eight, with the addition of more space there. There's a similar kind of strategy of adding space to the high school. There, it could either be, this has an early ed addition. It could either be a pre-kindergarten and kindergarten addition to the high school, meaning kind of a attached but separate space there, so that you could free up that space from the elementary schools, and the elementary schools become just one through five, not K through five or pre-K through five. Or if you'd want to do sort of two moves in one, that becomes an eighth-grade addition to the high school, which now makes it an eighth through 12 high school, and the middle school switches to be five through seven, five, six, and seven, so it's still three grades, but you're taking one grade out of the elementary schools again, which is about how much space needs to be relieved in order to relieve overcrowding. So whether it's the kindergarten and pre-K or the fifth grade coming out of the elementaries, that's the strategy that makes each of those conceivable. And then, as I mentioned, another possibility is a new freestanding building, which is perhaps an early ed building, meaning if there's going to be one new building, it could be a centralized early ed building, kindergarten and pre-K, so that you're pulling those grades again out of the existing elementary schools to free up some space. And you have one centralized, so-called early education building. Or, the last one, one new school. That's a freestanding K through five school. Roughly a four-section school comparable to the other schools, of course, if we could find a site for either of these. We don't necessarily have one in mind or know of any that are easily developed, but again, we think they should be on the table for long-term consideration here. So to look at them another way, here's a graphic that just shows kind of the existing schools right now. Here are the possible short-term options. So at each of these sites, if we were to go to the extreme and convert both the art and music room at Glover and carve a classroom out of the library, you gain three classrooms at the at the Glover School. Similar strategies at each of the other schools results in these totals. You'd gain, if you'd want to do just this line of just converting, literally just change the name on the door, don't do any construction, you could pick up five classrooms in the short term. And of course, you have to modify your art and music programs, how those are delivered. And if you wanted to do a little bit of construction to create these classrooms out of the current library spaces, you'd gain three more classrooms for a total of eight. And those could reasonably be accomplished in the short term. The construction we're talking about in those libraries is literally putting up a couple walls, revising the ventilation, the lighting, the sprinklers could probably be done over a summer while the building's unoccupied. I don't know about this summer, probably it's too soon to make those plans and make that decision, but it could be done over a summer to bring eight additional classrooms One of the other strategies that could be done in conjunction with that is to add some portable classrooms. So that if you were to consider this move of converting these spaces to classrooms, you maybe could consider also bringing in portable classrooms to act either as the music and art spaces that you're converting or to be classrooms in and of themselves. That's where we say you don't have to consider these options in isolation. They can be done in collaboration. So, if it's painful, you know, to give up art and music rooms, dedicate art and music rooms, one way, at least in a short term, to compensate for that is to bring in some additional modular classrooms to be dedicated art and music spaces. And then in the long term, this is sort of a graphic of what construction options there might be. So, at the Glover site is the one site that, at least from a building and site point of view, has a little bit of developable land. We know the traffic there is tight, the neighborhood is tight, the butters are close to that school in some sections. But it is possible to expand that one-story building there in a couple of different ways. It could be expandable by adding a one-story addition towards the rear where the gymnasium is or adding an addition in the front towards the brook. And that possibly could even be on two stories there. And that's why there's sort of a range of classrooms, possibly. But you can see the order of magnitude is now greater than just, you know, three or four classrooms at each building. Now, we're talking about, you know, something long-term that could be permanent if it could work. Or if we could build a freestanding early ed center, that's where we'd want to build about 20 classrooms. That's the projected need for pre-K and kindergarten is about 20 district-wide. And so, that would relieve space at each of the schools by pulling out those spaces into a freestanding building. Again, we don't have an ideal location for that kind of facility, but if it could be located near an existing school, it might help in the sense of that there could be some sharing, sharing of playgrounds or sharing of parking areas or access and so forth. The other possibility is, as we said, at the middle school here, doing an addition that could house the fifth grade. That addition would be about 18 classrooms. You could bring up a grade out of the elementary schools and make all the elementary schools then K to four. Or doing an addition at the high school and pulling out the kindergarten and pre-K from the elementaries, which would be about 20 classrooms. And again, that would free up 20 classrooms from the elementary schools by doing that. Or sort of just diagrammatically, building a new school would be about 24 classrooms. K through five, which is six grades times four sections per grade, that's 24 classrooms. So, that's, the range of long-term options is 11 to 24. The short-term ones are in the range of, you might say, five to eight that are being considered here. So, to help us go forward, these are kind of the key questions that we'd like to sort of start discussion on and get feedback on from you all as the school committee in terms of, are there some guidelines you want to give us in terms of average class size? Or even some districts say, you know, whether it's written into contracts or not, maybe there are numbers we don't want to exceed. And if you were to tell us that, we could recalculate what the space needs are and it might affect how we consider the options. So, you know, is centralized pre-K and K a good idea or not? You know, are you putting young children on a bus or you're driving them all to one location and they have to make a transition from kindergarten into first grade, which they don't have to do now? Once they start at a school, they continue on, you know, through fifth grade. There's issues there as to whether that makes sense. And then, you know, what about pulling out the fifth grade or what about pulling out kindergarten or what about putting the eighth grade at the high school? Those are educational questions that you may have some thoughts about. And the last one about, you know, a four-section school, as we said, 15 years ago or so when we were doing this, the four-section school was the desired goal for at least three out of the four schools. We knew Tucker was a fairly small site. We can only do a three-section school there, but the other three schools were all four-section schools. Is that kind of the ideal size? And therefore, that might affect how we rank and consider these alternatives if there is a strong preference for that size facility. So, Kevin, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you very much. So, that's quite a lot to digest. And I know that some of us on the facilities advisory committee have seen this before, but this gives us our first chance to discuss amongst ourselves some of these options or to pose any questions that we may have for the presentation. So, I'll start by opening up to my colleagues. Do any of my colleagues have any questions that they would like answered from our presenters?
Do you guys want to go first or you don't?
Well, yeah.
Sure.
I do have a couple of questions. Okay. I just want to clarify about the Cunningham fourth floor. You said that the first, in the first go-around, the building inspector was not keen on putting young kids up on that fourth floor. And I'm wondering if this go-around, we could think about it maybe as for fifth graders who are 10 and 11 years old rather than for a kind of K through five mentality, but think about it as simply for the older grades, which to me might be a better option than putting the library up there because at some point you are going to have kindergartners, first graders, second graders up there rather than simply having the older kids up there. I think it's a valuable, basically unused, slightly-used space that we could really get some mileage out of. So, I just want to put in a big push for that. One of my questions was answered with the last slide, so I can tick that one off. Thanks for that last slide. That was something that you added, not this one, but the one before that, something you added from the first time that I saw it. And it's a great graphic and the way that you match up each school with the option is terrific. It made it all very easily digestible to me and, as I said, answered some questions. I know this isn't under your purview, but I think it's something that I want to mention tonight because maybe some members of the community are wondering about it as well. And I'm sure facilities discussed this, so Ada, maybe you would want to address this. That is the former library site on the Blue Hills Parkway that I think the library still has control of. Has that been considered at all? Was that made available as a potential site? Do we, have we discussed it in facilities?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we did discuss it in facilities and came to the conclusion that we wouldn't be able to get enough classrooms out of it to merit the amount of money that would need to go into the building to bring it up to code.
So, about, do you have any sense of how many classrooms we would have gotten out of it?
Three or four.
Only three or four classrooms on that site?
Yeah, it's a small building and a very small site.
Okay.
And if I could jump in, conceivably, you could enlarge the building, but then it's a half-acre site, so it's a small parcel. At that point, the cost-benefit calculus changes as well because you're talking about basically tearing down the building and building into building.
Right.
On that side.
Can I ask though for that? For all those years that you used it as a Keds facility, though, was, it was the entire K, I mean, I know you had a cutoff because of size, but it was for the entire K environment, right, for all four elementaries? So, how many classrooms did you have run there at the time? Do you remember ballparking it?
I don't remember what the Keds enrollment would have been.
Well, because half the kids were there in the morning. Then they went, then they were bused.
Right, I understand, but I was just wondering like what, when you say there's definitely only three or four classrooms, like, I was just wondering, is that all Keds got in the morning and afternoon sessions?
It wasn't all kindergartners either. It was the kids whose families could afford to send their kids there. So, it was a smaller number of kids that then.
Yeah, and it was a cutoff, too. I mean, the people were there with the lounge chairs, the sign up and everything, you know. So, there was a limit of how much you could take, I remember, right? So, I just was wondering, yeah.
Well, to.
Three or four teachers. I'm trying to think, going back into the staffing.
Yeah.
And to jump back, does anyone, I don't have it at my fingertips, but the square footage of the building roughly?
No.
So, when we first started talking about this, well, a while ago, but at least a year ago, we looked at the square footage for the building and when we came up with the modern-sized classroom, inside the footprint, you could only fit four at the most if you got very creative. So.
The other number I know is the estimate to make it ADA compliant 20 years ago was $700,000.
Okay.
Because we looked at it as a possible site for the senior center back in the late 90s. And at that time, the estimate we got to make it ADA compliant was about $700,000. So, figure at least double that now.
So, it would be more cost-effective to raise the building and reconstruct something there, correct? All right, thank you.
And I believe in, maybe one of the library trustees will correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe they're permitted to gift us the parcel. I think we would have to purchase the parcel from them as well. So, there wouldn't necessarily be, which I'm sure, well, I'm not a lawyer, but you could probably do that over multiple years, but there wouldn't necessarily be a cost savings from acquiring the land.
But at least it's a site of land. I mean, we're short on that.
Yeah.
And so, it's somewhere that I went by today, I looked at the parking spaces and was thinking about it and just thought I'd bring it up tonight.
Yeah. And to round out the conversation, I know it's not our bailiwick per se, but from a townwide, you know, it's a capital asset that would be nice to maintain as a capital asset for the town.
Yeah.
So.
May I ask a question? So, just looking at the short-term options, where you're talking about converting the classrooms, but just, so I understand this properly, at Glover, it's not the actual art room, the original art room is already a classroom. What about the original music room?
It's still the music room.
So, the music room, as you come in on the left there, is still a music room?
It is.
So, the art room that you're talking about converting is already a smaller classroom somewhere.
It would be marginal as a full-size class.
What about at Colley-Cott and Cunningham? You say art and music, are they the original designed rooms or they are?
Yes. Well, there are three rooms for the entire Colley-Cott Cunningham. There's one art room and one music room that were the original art and music room. And then we took a computer lab and made it into an art music room. And then I have a shot of how many, even with that, at the Colley-Cott Cunningham kindergarten and first graders have already.
Okay.
Here's the plan right here. These are art and music down here behind the stage, right there. Those currently are still art and music in this plan. And then up here is one other room that's also, so there are three spaces that are currently used for art and music between the two schools there.
Between them, right.
And in terms of converting them, we wouldn't recommend convert, whoops, sorry. We wouldn't recommend converting these because they're interior windowless rooms.
Right, yeah.
But one thing you could do, this one could be converted, it has windows up here, is to take the teachers' room from here and move that to the windowless space and take the nicest teacher's room in Milton and convert that back into a classroom is a way to, so you, in essence, are giving up an art room, but you're not literally going to occupy or put students in the current windowless art room as a full-time classroom. You'd put the students here and put the teachers there, perhaps.
Right.
And so, that's in our count of converting rooms. That's how we counted it here. So, there would still be, you know, one space between the two schools that could be used for art and music in addition to art being on a cart there.
No, no, no. I.
So, I have a question on, at the end of elementary school totals, when you look at the short-term three years, where we'll be at as shortage of, you basically say it's almost 20 classrooms, 19.5.
Yes, yes.
So, that's in three years, like in, like.
No, that's in 10 years. The 19.5 is in.
Oh, it's 10, okay.
No, 10 years is the 25.5, right?
Yeah, you say short-term, three years.
Total classroom, yes, total classroom.
That's what I mean, yeah.
It's three years.
I'm just rounding up to 20 because it's 19.5. So, it's 20 classrooms. So, we would need, to maintain the size that we want right now, we would need 20 new classrooms.
And that restores art and music.
Correct, with the art and music back to where it is.
You know, one of each space at each school. So, that's eight of them district-wide as opposed to, you know, what currently is, I think, five district-wide, yes.
Okay. So, like, for the short term, if we're staying on short term, if we just, if we just took, you say the convert, like you say you'd get five additional classrooms, right? Like, in the next three years, if we did that, well, we were, you know, figuring out what to do. I get, you know, in three years, we would still need 15 additional classes. I mean, I guess we wouldn't, right? Because that's including art and music. So, we would need, so just say for the next, in the next three, by year three of this, we would, we would need, even if we are maxing out and using art and music, we'd still be short quite a few classrooms in three years at the elementary level. I mean, a lot.
I mean, one way to think of it is, you just were saying, you know, we need 19.5 classrooms and, you know, that's supplying five of them. So, that's one quarter of the need.
Yeah.
So, if that's all you did, the average class size would go up, you know, maybe three-quarters of a student or so, not the full one that we calculated in the do-nothing option.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, remember.
Asking, thinking about the modular classrooms, do you have any more information about like how large they are these days, how many students they might hold on average? Do systems like lease them and rent them for short-term periods?
They do. I mean, there's a whole industry out there that does that and they, chances are, you might even find some that are already constructed in that some other school that they're.
Their building is completed.
Turning back, you know, that they no longer need. And they generally are 850 square feet or so, which is a full-size classroom size. So, in terms of size, they are comparable there. It's more the, they're not made of sort of permanent construction. They're made of plywood and, you know, thinner walls and so forth. They generally are air-conditioned. That's one thing that's different than a lot of elementary schools. But in terms of size, they meet size standards.
And do you know what the cost is of renting them or leasing them for?
Not off the top of my head, but we'll probably have some data next week as we look at the next phase of this. And a lot has. As we look at the next phase of this. And a lot has to do with how long you lease them and it's sort of like leasing a car. Almost. If, if you're going to own them for five years or something, it might be a lot different than if it's just one or two years. In terms of how much it costs you per classroom.
Can I ask to, to Betty, to Betty, remember White's point? I've, I sat through the first presentation, like where the heck would you put them at Cunningham and Collicott? I mean, you'd literally take away all of the playgrounds and then the pickup and drop offs in the back.
Yeah, just to give you an idea, um, we do have a sketch. Let me see if I can.
Same thing at Tucker.
No, it's only at Glover.
Uh, right there.
It's only Glover.
So there's Glover.
Yeah.
There's three classrooms.
Yeah.
Off the gym. Just three. That's all you get. And, you know, you, you're cutting down some of that playground there. To do much more than that, it starts, you know, getting kind of crazy. Um, you know, maybe you could do four or five. You're not going to do eighteen or there in, in portable classrooms. That's why it's a very temporary.
Yeah.
solution. And it might be a way to compensate, as we said, for the loss of art and music classrooms, uh, perhaps. If, if that makes sense. I, I don't know. You know, there may be a desire to keep the, you know, the, I'm sorry, the um, uh, permanent classroom, so to speak, within the body of the building and, and just have art and music, you know, a space you go to once or twice a week, um, not, you're spending, you know, the majority of your time there, be in the portables. As, as a way to think about it perhaps. Um, you know, likewise, I, I think we might have a sketch at, uh, whoops, stop that one, this one.
There it is.
There's, there's four classrooms at Collicott. You can see how much of the playground it takes up. And again, it's just four classrooms. Cause the other thing is that it's only one story, so it takes up a lot of footprint, a lot of ground area. And you don't gain a lot and you're giving up playground, which is precious space on a tight site there. So, but at least, you know, I mean, that's typically how you see them though, cause you, they want to be connected to the building. Particularly if, if these don't have boys or girls rooms in them, they, you know, they need to have access to bathrooms inside the building. They need to get other spaces, art, music, kindergarten, or I mean cafeteria. Um, so they need to be connected.
They would be connected after the cafeteria.
Uh, in this case, there's a stair and a, right there, a hallway. So there's still gaps. So you're not blocking the windows technically, although the view of the cafeteria would be of the modular classrooms too, you know? But it's not directly against them. But that's typically how, how they are positioned. So, yeah, it's not, not a great solution, um, because there's not a lot of land.
So, um, picking up where you left off, Member Verella, so if you, um, so, so I will reiterate this, this, this is, this is our, as a committee, chance to talk about this amongst ourselves. So we, and I will say to the, our, our viewing public, um, you know, as you watch us sort of work through this, we, we welcome your feedback, but also realize that a lot of what we say is, is we're discussing the options. We're not deciding anything tonight. We're even necessarily making arguments that will end up being used, um, as we make a final decision. But if you, if you go back to the elementary totals and if you, if you do not restore art and music classrooms and you assume that we're not adding any full sized special education space or a half pre, preschool classroom, we're at nineteen, needed nineteen over three years. And you subtract from that the eight sort of low hanging fruit, quote unquote, that, that we, um, you know, all the remaining art and music and, and three sections of the library. That still leaves you with a deficit of seven over the next three years. So, um, so I, looking at those numbers and looking at the, the, that configuration of portable classrooms there, those numbers, those numbers seem to match up to an extent.
Yeah, these are sort of the key numbers you want to look at right there. Thirteen and four.
Yeah.
Seventeen, I know this says nineteen and a half, but as we said, if, if you, you know, really focus on the full time classroom needs as the most urgent, it, it's seventeen. And if you were to convert other spaces, you know, um, you could gain up to half of those in a sense, eight of them.
Yeah.
And then, you, you know, if you wanted to go further, you might think about adding some portables, um, in addition. So there, there's sort of a mixture there.
Yeah, but I, I think it, though, that, that sort of brings into focus for me the fact that we, we are not, we are not going to be able to escape this short, this short term crunch without, uh, within our current footprint, with our current student census per class.
Right.
We are either going to have to, um, do a combination of, you know, increasing class size or moving beyond our, our current footprint, square foot, square footage footprint.
Yes.
And you had something you wanted to say, Member Rella?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I, yeah, it's to, to your point, and again, I'm, we're discussing this and thinking out loud. You know, none of, and, and for the viewing audience of people watching, so none of this is ideal, but at the end of the day, class size is the most important thing to sort of stop the bleeding, you know? And so to me, um, it would make the most sense to, I mean, I don't know how much it would cost to, you said the, the library stuff could be done over summer, right? So, you know, to me, it makes the most sense unless we somehow by magic wand, um, could potentially rent local, rent in town, depending on how much that is. But i- if we do, if we do the, the converting and the constructing and get the eight and do the, say, was it almost six portables between Glover and Cunningham and Collicott?
Seven.
Seven. That would be the, you know, uh, the most ideal thing, and, you know, to sort of just tread water for size before the long term decision is made on what to do.
Yes, I'm sorry, Member Rosemary, then did you have something else? Yes.
Carl, I was wondering if you could tell us about the fourth floor of Cunningham. How many classrooms would we get out of that?
We think you could get approximately five up there in that space. Maybe, that might be a little wishful, four to five. The, the other thought too, if we put the library up there and converted the library, we'd get five in the current library space. So it's almost interchangeable. Obviously with all those dormers, the, the fourth floor, if you haven't been up there, you know, kind of attic space with a lot of dormers, it doesn't make for nice rectangular classroom spaces. That's why there may only be four, depending on how you use those, those dormer spaces.
Okay.
So four would be one grade if we're talking about the fifth grade, if that's, makes more sense and they're older students. And if that's, you know, becomes acceptable, um, you know, matches up well with one grade.
Dr. Cracker.
I mean, I know we're not going to solve this here, but I do, um, always have in mind, like when we think about add, adding those three modular classrooms at Glover or four at the Cunningham Collicott, the pressure that this puts on the other facilities, the other needs, like using the gym or using the cafeteria and having to add lunches and being able to serve that number of students in the facilities that we have. And that's something else that we have to keep in mind and account for somehow. I mean, kids are going to be eating lunch at like ten o'clock in the morning or something. I, I don't know how, maybe they already are.
But I have a question to that though, Elena. Aren't they already going to be doing that? Cause they're coming, whether they're in a class of thirty or a class of twenty four, right? Like it's, it's still going to be, the cars are still going to be there from the families, the lunches, I mean, the size is happening if it happens based on the estimates. It's just a matter of.
It's a matter of distribution.
Yeah.
So the, if you obviously add more space, spaces to the Glover, you are adding more students there proportionally as opposed to distributing them over all the classrooms in the district. So it, it is possible that that, you know, that those schools, whichever ones are expanded, without expanding the cafeteria, i- is slightly being affected disproportionately. Uh, it's not significant. They're all going to be hurt in some ways.
Uh huh.
And having lunch at ten thirty in the morning probably, uh, you know, you'd have four or five lunch shifts as opposed to three or four.
So would you just have three and four with more people? You do, that's what it would be. You'd have three or more, three or four shifts with just more kids.
If the cafeteria can't handle it, you'd have to go to more lunch shifts.
If they can't seat them, what are you going to do?
You can't seat them, you can't get them through the line fast enough.
Right.
In a, in a lunch period. So you have to have more lunch shifts.
So you'd have that anyway though with the enrollment number, no matter what?
With more students, right. Whether you have twenty two in a classroom.
Right.
And more classrooms or have twenty eight in a classroom and fewer classrooms.
Right.
You have the same number of students.
I mean, I just, I visit, I, I see Cunningham and Collicott now in the mornings and it's, it's, you know, it's hectic and crazy and busy, busy, busy. And, uh, I mean, they do a great job, but it is packed. It, there are lots of children there. So I just feel like, yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around, what is the difference between, if we, if they're, if we, if they're up on the fourth floor of Cunningham, if they're in the modulators, if we're converting the art rooms, like the bodies are still going to be there with all that other stuff, with the gym use, with cafeteria use, with whatever. But my main concern is I'd still rather them be in a class, you know, for their day of twenty two to twenty three.
That's the difference.
Than twenty nine.
It's the educational experience.
That's my biggest thing, yeah, I mean.
Member Rosemary.
Another question for you. The, um, the land that we own around Cunningham, Collicott, is there any potential for even if on just a temporary basis of expanding our playground into some of that land in the back? Like if we were to put modulars in the current playground, there, there are now like two hundred and fifty kids.
Yeah.
At a shot out in that playground and to take up half of it with classrooms, it just is, that's not feasible.
Yeah, it's, it's not easily done, but because of the slope and the, and the topography, um, because a- as you know, as you come around here, this is sloping down this driveway. There's a change in level from the front to the back here. And so this land is sloping here. It'd be hard, you know, on a quick, easy basis to just, you know, cut down some trees and say, you know, play area. Because the ground is, is sloping. It needs some work to make it usable as a playground there. And if you remember the property lines, um, right, whoops, where did I have that? Right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, unfortunately, there's that cut in. So this is really too narrow here to, this is somewhat level right there, but that's kind of too narrow to develop. It's really here that you'd want to develop. Um, we have more area, but there, that's where there's a fair change in, in grade, um, to make it usable.
And some wetland.
Yeah, and there's some low, lower areas back here too that, um, we don't know yet if they're officially wet. You know, wetlands protected by conservation commission, um, could well be. And so there'd be some setbacks that, that further limit how much you could do back here. But you're right, you, you know, as you add children and teachers and staff, you want to expand parking, you want to expand play areas too. And, and unfortunately, this is a very busy road to cross to access those green areas, um, across the street. So you'd, you'd want to look for areas here to, there is a little bit here off of this parking area that's level. Um, but you can see, you know, that's as much playground as they have right now. And so, you know, expanding it would, would help significantly if we're going to increase the population on this site.
Member Rella.
So we discussed this when we met, when we had that facilities, um, presentation that, you know, over the course of the last ten years, we have already had an influx of four hundred students, which is a school in itself. So we are currently in the schools that we have running an additional school, if you want to look at it that way. Um, with no room for vision. So no possibility to grow our preschool program, no possibility to add special education programs that we want, would want to run in house, because we don't have any space for that. So, and we listened to all of the site council presentations at the finance subcommittee meetings. And, you know, when it's a rainy day, when it's an impossible day to go outside, you're, you are, you are stressing the space needs already, right? So we, so we already, if, if nothing happened and we just continued at this pace for the next ten years, we're already running another school in the spaces we have. We're making do, but it's not ideal. And it doesn't leave any room for vision and growth. So we can't add more special ed programs to bring costs down and, and grow them in our own district because we don't have a space for that. We can't add any more preschools with the forty plus people we have on the waiting list at Tucker because we have no space for that. So even if we, the do nothing thing doesn't even seem like an option to me because we're already, we're doing a good job, but we could do better and then we still have no, no room to grow our vision as a district.
So, you know, that, for me, that's like, that's the piece that stands out.
Every time that I listen to you all, I think about that piece. Like if you want to grow the district and what you want to do for the district, we need more space one way or the other.
It's ironic that you spoke to that because Carl and I spoke today and with an increase in number of students, percentage wise, children with special needs, and we're not really figuring more special needs spaces. In addition to your point, I said to Carl today, um, if we wanted to pilot new programs, you, uh, fund it one next year. They found space at the middle to do that. It's going to take space and then we could bring children back out of, uh, private spent placements, but we don't have classrooms for those programs.
Yeah, this is really unusual that, that this is a zero. District wide, that there's not a full sized special, you know, self-contained, um, and you're tuitioning out students, you know, by necessity because you don't have the space.
So for me, when I think about thinking about a plan, however we think about a plan, thinking about maximizing that plan, not just necessarily thinking about, okay, we're going to use it for just that elementary. But how could, if enrollment changes, how could you use that space to maximize special ed programs? To maximize early childhood programs, to maximize other types of space?
True.
So that you're not just looking at it that way, but you're thinking about the other possibilities. Because then it's, regardless of what happens with enrollment, if it fluctuates here or there a little bit, you still have the possibility to use space in an effective manner.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the waitlist for our pre-K right now is tremendous.
Forty at Tucker?
Forty at Tucker, I love two classes, yes. So, um, so I agree with you. That's exactly what I was going to say is,
Yeah.
even if it levels off and we have five extra classrooms, those won't be extra classrooms. We won't be able to use them and be bringing in tuition money for the pre-K as well.
So, um, Member Everhart, I'm going to paraphrase you, but I'm going to say we're already a school, an elementary school in the red. And, uh, in, in ten years, we're going to be a second elementary school in the red.
Yeah.
And that's, that's, that's my, one of my tech homes from this right now. So as we move forward, we need to think about that.
Yeah. Right.
So one of the things you have to think about too, just as philosophically, you know, I work at an elementary school. I see how busy every single day is with art with, you know, I work at a smaller elementary school than, than Glover and then Cunningham, Collicott. But, you know, the wear and tear on the buildings and the, the upkeep and just the, just the crowding and trying to get down the hallways and kids walking down the stairs and dismissing it. Just think how busy it is. And I, I feel like right now, even, you know, when I walk into Glover occasionally when school's in session and when you're up here at the high school, those are the two buildings I see the most often. I mean, our buildings are crowded now. There's a lot of activity and kids. And I just think that if we, if we add in addition to some of the existing space, are we, are we punishing these buildings more? And, you know, with, in just the traffic and the staffing and all that, I, I just worry that long term, it's probably not a great decision. And, you know, I've been all over the map with what we should be doing. I, I came in thinking, oh, we just bring the fifth grade up to Paris and that'll be the easiest solution. Now I'm thinking, I don't think so. And now I'm looking at the eighth grade going up to the high school, but I'm thinking, you know, traffic and, and staffing and congestion and, you know, I'm more and more thinking that we might need a new building, a new, a new standalone K through five. I mean, and I've gone full circle, not thinking that initially, but now I'm thinking, we might have to sort of look at that more solidly than I had anticipated, given what you look at in these details.
So I will use that as a segue to ask, um, since we have our, our experts here, what, what sort of acreage, um, do they, is recommended for an elementary, for citing an elementary? what, what sort of acreage do they, is recommended for an elementary, for citing an elementary school? In an ideal world?
Obviously, a lot depends on, on the, the site amenities that you wanna provide. And, you know, if you're totally suburban school, that, um, everybody drives to, and there's parking needs and so forth. But one rule of thumb is, is ten acres for an elementary school. Um, and I, there's usually a guideline to that, too, that, that, um, ten acres for like the first, I don't know, three hundred, and, and then one acre for every hundred thereafter. So, if you had, you know, four hundred kids, it might be eleven acres, you know, so somewhere in that neighborhood. But it's sizable. Um, it's not, you know, a standard lot. The Tucker property is maybe...
The biggest Tucker, yeah.
Three acres, two acres, something like that, you know, something. So you can imagine, that's, that's what happens when that's all you have, is you end up with more urban solution of paving right up to a chain-linked fence, and playgrounds right next to the building, windows and things like that. Ten acres gives you a little breathing room, have parking, have playground, have, and you'd still have a multi-story building, not, not a sprawling one-story building like Glover. You'd have a more compact, at least two-story, maybe even three-story.
And you get the buses off the street.
Yeah, and you'd separate buses and cars and, and get them off the street, um, in, in that kind of acreage.
Okay. Yes, member Rella.
So, I mean, I'm just putting on my reality hat here. Um, we don't have that. We don't have that space. I mean, you know, the biggest problem, Milton, you guys know, you've been through it. Like, we are probably tighter on space than most towns in the state of Massachusetts, I think. Um, so, and I'm just concerned, but I just don't want that class size. I just don't want kids to have to be penalized for too long a time, you know, with class size. What, I, I, I've always been, I mean, I, I respect what Member White said, but a whole new school, I just don't know where it's, where it's going. And I, I kind of left with, um, can you speak a little bit to the early ed addition? Um, I know that we just, again, threw this around, but what about realistically, like, the grade-five addition at, uh, the Pierce and the early ed addition at the high school? And my other question with the early ed addition of high school, like, I know we spoke about it, but would that... Because I also think to both, uh, Member Everhart and Craig's head's, um, um, concern about vision, growth, special ed, if we had another site, whether, I mean, 'cause that, to me, almost looked like it's all, like, an, an early ed center. But how, um, how, how many classes would that take? And could it fit all the pre-K and K? And then, even if, even if down the line, there was a reduction, like, is this space we could use for additional special education services or things like that? I mean, how many classrooms would that hold?
And if I could piggyback on your question, rough, give us a rough idea of construction timeline. I won't ask for cost yet.
Yeah.
Uh, how long, how long would these additions take to?
Well, generally, um, the order of magnitude that we're talking about would be probably two years to construct the, the sizes that, whether it's a freestanding building or an addition, probably be in that, might be able to even shorten it, if you start at an optimal time, um, and, and in a summer or something like that. But, um, at the middle school, first of all, just to answer that question, the, the area that we envisioned could be expanded is, is kind of off to the side here, um, where, yes, you, you would butt up against, um, some classrooms, um, that exist now, but sort of hold the building, 'cause it steps back after one story here, there's the upper floors. So you'd only be sort of losing a couple of classrooms there, you know, would, would become internal. Um, and that's the footprint, so you can see those are roughly classrooms there. Six per floor, and if it were three floors to match up, that's about eighteen. So the idea is that it would be just about enough to take a grade, fifth grade, out of the elementary schools to bring them up to the high school.
Middle school.
Uh, to the middle school, I mean, and swing the road around and, and replace the parking. Again, you're losing, you know, some play area, you're losing, you know, or not gaining proportionally parking. That, that'd be a little bit of an issue, but there is a parking lot across here that offers some relief. And you'd maintain basically one playing field, you know, there. You know, there might be ways to develop a little more parking here. But anyways, that's, that's the concept, is that if it makes sense educationally to do, to bring the fifth grade up, that you could accommodate them here and make it a five-through-eight school. Again, you'd have the issue with the cafeteria, you'd have to have another lunch shift, maybe even one and a half more or something, um, there, you're not expanding. The gym is probably okay for the number of kids, if, with a divider curtain and running simultaneous gym classes sometimes. The library's probably okay at its existing size without expanding to bring the additional population. So, it's reasonable. Again, there's the educational question as to whether it makes sense to have the fifth grade there.
No. Just to follow up to that, because I know we discussed Dr. Donahue, again, we're just throwing this out here, 'cause we're, we're also pondering, because, um, again, the expansion that we see in the elementary is going to travel. I mean, there is, we do, there is some private school flight from seven to nine. But, mostly, most of the entire town does come up at least for sixth, and then decide where they might go. For private, and even our, um, our containment is growing at that, at those grade levels, higher than it has been in the very recent, you know, legacy path. So, what if we had, we added that and added an early ed? And temporarily, I mean, if you do it in stages, but temporarily, the fifth grade moves up there. And then when the early ed is done, the elementaries go back to one-five. And then there's space there to deal, to accommodate the growth of people moving up in our system, so that we won't be all of a sudden busting at the seams at Pierce and the high school.
Yeah, the numbers that, you certainly could do that. It gives you flexibility in the future. The, the numbers that, as we understand them, the projections, it, it seems like you wouldn't necessarily have to expand the Pierce, you wouldn't necessarily have to expand the high school. They might get a little bit tighter in terms of scheduling. That, that's where it's a little harder for us to predict, um, overcrowding at middle school and high school, 'cause so much of it depends on your particular curriculum, your particular scheduling challenges and so forth. It's not quite as easy as elementary school, you know, dividing kids into, into similar classrooms when you're offering electives and, and, uh, trying to schedule rooms to their maximum. And you end up sharing rooms and that sort of thing. Teachers don't own a room all day long. If they only teach five out of seven periods, then the room's available for two periods. You might have to use it for those two periods, and the teacher goes to a planning space to do his or her planning, and, and the room's used for a different subject by a different teacher. You know, those things can happen to make the buildings more efficient, and if they did happen, we think that, given your projections, you wouldn't necessarily have to expand the high school and middle school for the projected enrollments at this time. But certainly, doing something that gives you that flexibility, as somebody said, you know, is the vision you want for, for the long term.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have to make that decision in the short term.
But, but, but look what happened ten years out from the building of all the schools. Do you know what I mean? And I, I, ha, having kids who've just been up here and being in the midst of being a high school parent right now, um, I think, I just think that's gonna change. I, I, I just think, space-wise, it could, it could happen.
And just to show you, you know, the, the, um, the consideration at the high school is, is on the fieldhouse side of the building there, that entrance, there is some space there, that green space, that could house, in this case, it's about ten or eleven classrooms per floor. And if it were a two-story addition, that's twenty-something classrooms, twenty-twenty-two classrooms. They could be, because it is so separate from the high school, in a sense, it could be the early ed center. Those kids would never have to mix with the high school kids. That, that's why it seemed appropriate there. And it, it could be an eighth-grade addition. That's a little bit more discreet, but maybe that's okay for eighth graders to be kind of separate, uh, there. Uh, so you could think of it either way, but there is, you know, opportunity to add some space there and kind of continue the parking around. And it, it seems like there's enough parking at, at the high school there, and, at least in the short term. And, and we're not, um, reducing play area any, really. That, that's kind of a leftover little triangle. It's sometimes used for practice, but not much else, that green space. So, it, it seems like an opportunity there to be able to expand that building.
Dr. Craig.
Thank you. And unlike the, um, addition at Pierce, this one would include another cafeteria area?
Yeah, it, you, to function as, as a separate early ed area, this, this interior space right here, um, it, it could be two stories, it could be a play area, um, not quite a gym, but, you know, an interior playroom on those rainy days when it plays inside, um, in the center. And at the second level, it could be the equivalent of a library for, again, for early ed. It's a different kind of facility. It's more reading space or tutorial, but it, it gives you some central space. And then there'd also be some space that could be, um, an auxiliary, um, cafeteria, have a warming kitchen, I mean, that could be served by the main kitchen of the high school, food brought over and warmed and, and served in that central space. So that, it's a multipurpose space in that regard. So again, yeah, those young children, if it were a full-day program or for the full-day kindergarten, they don't have to eat lunch in the high school cafeteria. They have their separate dedicated space.
Okay, thanks.
Member Rosemary.
Um, Carl, the, in your elementary school totals, um, for the Assume program, you're, um, suggesting that we need twenty kindergarten classes, uh, classrooms, and six, five to six preschool. And I'm just wondering where we get to twenty for early childhood center, given those numbers? Are we short by five or six with that?
Yeah, I, I guess in, in this, I think there's, there's a, um, when, when we did those numbers, we did them school by school. And so because of rounding off, you, you end up needing more rooms when you distribute them. If you centralize it, and then you can much more easily distribute children among the rooms, it, it reduces the need. That's the discrepancy, I think. So we think twenty-two is actually the number. If you were to build a preschool center, that twenty-two would serve you in the long term, between kindergarten...
Both kindergarten and preschool.
Right, right, because, like I say, you have that ability to more evenly divide the students.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask a question about another cost? So, with, with these two class, with, with, I'm just saying the fifth, the additional, um, space to Pierce and here, you also, we could bring up the current stat, like, the current K and pre-K there. With a whole new school, we'd have to hire a whole new set of teachers and a new prin, and a principal and assistant principal. And I just look at, you know, I just look at the yearly budget and the funding, and if we could just bring them up and bring, and even if we did the interim of fifth grade, you could bring them up, and I know we would need somebody to run, you know, we would need somebody to run the early ed center. I mean, you'd need a couple of additional positions, but not an entire new school staff.
There are, there are school districts where principals go between buildings. Uh, smaller buildings. And, um, you know, just brainstorming, if you did the fifth grade, um, that could be overseen by one principal, five through eight.
I mean, I also feel like this, it's never gonna be ideal. Like, it's, 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 there's not gonna be a perfect, though, you know, a perfect situation because of the fact that we're so tight on space, but...
Yeah, and I, I think that's an important, um, reality to acknowledge. You know, with, these phenomenal new buildings, um, it was, the building process, as those who are intimately involved with it years ago will remind you, it was not a per, there were some hiccups. And I think the, the, especially with Cunningham, Collicott, that the, the final design things were, is the phrase, um, cost value, cost, value-costed outage.
Value.
Thank you, thank you, yes. Um, that we would have liked to have had, so, and, and, you know, we're, we're living, you know, we're doing very well.
Yeah.
Without those, it would be better if we had them. But, um, so that's a, that's an important reality to face, that, you know, there, there may be an ideal solution in an ideal town in someplace with a lot of open land, um, but we are not there. So, um, I'm, I'm happy to continue, we can continue asking, um, our experts here, um, building-related questions. I, I think, uh, another component to this is the, sort of the, the idea of the, the programming and, um, talking about what we think are our ideal setup for the district. One-to-five, K to five, et cetera, et cetera. And, um, I'd like to involve the administration a little bit on that now, with, with the important caveat that I, I don't expect you to give us sort of formal or final recommendations now. But just if you would like to share any of your thoughts on what you've seen or, or heard tonight.
Well, I'm an advocate for minimal transitions for children. Who, who were the Varellas? You know, did you go K-12, five different schools? And, um, the research is there, that's why districts have gone to K-8. That they built continuity, um, they belong to a school district, they belong to a school. Transitions, transitions are hard. We know from five to six and eight to nine. And so, um, the minimal transitions would, I'd be an advocate for.
Yeah.
But, um, to the point, um, that school committee members have said, uh, we even have an issue with next year's rising kindergartens. Uh, where the classrooms are going to go. So, um, we've done well, and this really puts a visual to, uh, you know, for me, if you're gonna hire art and music teachers, then it's a commitment that you want art and music, and you can't put on a cot in art or music what you're going to get in an art and music room. You almost have to see it to believe it. And, uh, we've made an investment, the Milton Foundation, the Milton School Budget, in, um, musical instruments and, um, art, uh, programs. So, uh, those, those have been huge. And, um, when I meet parents, uh, those are draws for the district. So, so, uh, art, music, uh, library, physical education, those are important. I think we heard it last summer from Cunningham and Collicott parents.
Yeah. And, and I'm not saying anything that you haven't said on multiple occasions, but it's, the, the other, from a purely logistical standpoint, too, it's incredibly helpful at the elementary level to have the students out of their classrooms for a few minutes to let the teachers reset and reorganize. And then, um, when they come back, start a new, you know, whether it's transitioning from language to mathematics or, or what have you. Um, and, on the other hand, not to worry about, you know, paint on the floor and, you know, picking up. The, I mean, these are, these are, sound silly, but legitimate logistical concerns that, you know, we scrape and we claw and we look for, you know, five minutes here and, and six minutes there to put together for educational time, and that's sort of, that, that eats into it during the day. And it, it, it's another reason to advocate for, advocate for full-space specialist classroom spaces.
Can I, so, so, so the query, so to further Dr. Donahue's query, under the given circumstances, I mean, if we, if we can have another building because we don't have the space for another building, um, when you say the least amount of transition, then ultimately, when it's done, do you think like a, an early, an early ed center and then a one-five, of a one-five place would be okay? Yes. I mean, again, I'm just gonna talk about experience, but a lot of the kids in my daughter's years, they did kindergarten at Glover, first grade at the nineteen-oh-nine, the nineteen-oh-nine building. Then they went to either Cunningham or Collicott, and, and they, and they survived. They, and they flourished, and they all go to spectacular schools. And now with that said... And now with that said, they do remember it, it's kind of like a faint memory, you know, like their memory really is of, and then I had a son, never knew anything but, you know, but I don't think, you know, the ones that went through transition, and I don't know, I feel like, listen, I'm just a parent, I feel that even if you had to go to, you know, yeah, if you went to an early ed center and said, oh, you know, we're going to go, we're going to go to the, you know, the kindergarten school or whatever, and then they go to their respective schools, it's, I don't know, they seem to adapt much better than when you are in fourth grade and then you have to go up to Pierce. Because, you know, everyone's, everyone gets along in pre-K and K, like if everyone could live like together like we do in pre-K and K, it'd be a happier world that we live in. But from third grade on, you know, it seems like that's when a lot of the more challenges of socialization amongst children happen, in the resource yard and, you know, so the less change to me on that end of it, you know. I think the whole K-four, five-eight, nine-twelve, I'm, I'm not a proponent of that, I just don't think, you know. And then I also think that at an early ed center, and if you could chime in, you know, Ada and Margaret, who are also specialists along with our administration, you know, if there's any kind of issues, like early intervention is always key, and we have four elementary schools now with, where the pre-Ks are, you know, located, but if we have those specialists all in one place, there's more time on task with more students at an earlier age, you know, I'm just thinking a lot about that too.
Yeah.
Carl, are pre-K Ks becoming popular?
Yes, definitely more of them nowadays, both for the educational benefit and you might say the social benefit of it, I guess, we see more of them. Unfortunately, the state and their reimbursement programs don't reimburse the construction of pre-K spaces yet, when they, you know, even if they're reimbursing for a new elementary school. They allow it to happen within the building, but they, you know, kind of prorate that space and don't reimburse for it unfortunately yet. Maybe that will change soon.
Hmm.
Member Rosemary.
On the other hand, if you're talking about reducing the number of transitions, having a separate pre-K and K adds a transition in a child's education. So, you know, I could really go back and forth on this because there are definite benefits of having preschool and kindergarten teachers and kids all together, but it does add that extra transition when you go from that early childhood center to first grade, that wouldn't be there if you went in your neighborhood school to one of those programs.
Can you speak Ada to, like, or even Mary, like, that, is it, is it really that, is it a struggle, I mean, does, is it detrimental, like if they feel like they're in K and then they, you know, and then they have to go up to first grade, like it's, to Ada's point, I mean, I see, I see the point, but I also, I don't know, I just don't, I just don't know how time-wise we can, and location-wise, we can add another school unless.
Janet's worked in a pre, she has some feelings about it.
Please, Assistant Superintendent Janet.
I actually was in a pre-K to two school. First it was pre-K to three, then it became pre-K to two school, and in a smaller district, but we did call it, you know, our early childhood center, and the parents loved it. The students made a transition in grade three to the, to the three to five school that was almost on campus. The, the sort of blueprint that you had of the early childhood center that you pulled up was very appealing to me, to be, you know, to attach to the high school and just the way you described the common spaces, and that I thought was very appealing.
The other advantage to that we talked about a little bit, as opposed to trying to expand the other schools where there are already traffic issues and congestion issues, adding that grade to the high school, theoretically you could manage that by offsetting the schedules so that kids and buses aren't arriving at the same time for the early ed center as they are for the high school. So that, that's one advantage to mixing those populations on one side, kind of spreads out the.
Can I ask that though to you and to the administration, because I've, I've been thinking about that.
Hold on just a second. A member of our district.
I'm sorry. No, I was just going to say that for us, I think, like Ada, I sort of have mixed feelings. I wouldn't mind a pre-K to two. I know that's not an ideal thing either, too many transitions, too many, but that's true any, that's true any EYC, that's true early childhood, pre-K to second grade, birth to second grade. So I think though that in our district where the option of choosing a different first grade program and the option of going to a first, you might not even go to first grade in the kindergarten that you're at, if you choose a program that you don't get the space in, it does sort of alleviate that piece. They're still going to go to the school that their sibling went to regardless. So, like Ada, I have mixed feelings about it, but it does seem to me the most, it seems to me the one that is the most educationally sound in terms of less disruption for, I wouldn't want to see the fifth grade at the middle school, I wouldn't want to see the eighth grade at the high school. I don't necessarily mind, of course, we don't have enough pre-K spaces for all those kindergartners, so sure, if we could have pre-K and K and all the kids came for both those things and then went to first grade, that'd be ideal, but that would require a lot more space. But like Janet, I do love the configuration and I like the big space at the Coolidge Corner School in Brookline, they have a large cafeteria space that also doubles as a space where they have indoor recess, and it's enormous, it's really a very nice space surrounded by windows, and they can play in there, and then they have tables where they can do, you know, table activities, morning things, it's really very nice. So it is a possibility in terms of the way you can use the space and when you think about designing it, so.
Member Brown.
Um, I have to get my question answered. It's okay, okay, no worries, no worries.
Maybe the spinoff, if I might, what Carl was suggesting was that the preschool hours would be different than the high school. So all of these options, you know, you fix the traffic at Pierce.
Right.
Put 300 more. So it would be off hours from the high school.
So can I, but this is what I wanted to ask, so I totally get it in the morning, especially because even at the high school in the morning, it's like, it's kind of easy breezy, like because so many kids go in super early and, you know, so you drop off, it's just, it's just, it's not Pierce, it's just a totally different ballgame. So, and then the bell rings by 7:50, and then, you know, early ed wouldn't really start until much after that, and it's quiet and serene, like if I come up here for an eight o'clock meeting, it's like dead zone, right? So that's all, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be concerned with that as long as that space to either have the bus pull in or the cars pull in. But what about, so if it's a full day, whether it's, and then half-day K, again, it wouldn't be a problem for if there were certain pre-K programs, some kids left at half-day, and then if the full day element, of course, full-day K and some of the full-day pre-K programs were there. But what about the afternoon where it's so close to the fieldhouse, and that is like the busiest place in the world from 2:20 on, but we could, I guess, figure the release differently somehow, right?
Well, if, you know, Collicott, Cunningham, the Tucker releases at what time?
Tucker, 3:19.
3:19.
Yeah.
Sort of quiet here.
Exactly, yeah, so I guess everyone would be already off to their afternoon practices, but I just would want that so that it would start at nine or 8:45 and not let go until 3:15.
It could be designed in such a way too, that the access and egress from the early ed center is totally separate from the high school side. I know there's still cars and there's still a road around there.
Yeah, and the kids are all walking around.
But the high school kids could be contained, if we were to look at that, in sort of a plaza that they'd hang out in. Let me skip all these, sorry. Get to the high school and middle schools. You're going to have these memorized by the M E's. So if we look at this, this plaza here is for high school kids, and this entrance to the fieldhouse remains exclusively for high school comings and goings, and there, you know, there'd even be a bus pull-off for visiting teams here and that sort of thing. Whereas this entrance, you know, clear around the other side of the building and this parking would be for the early ed center and limited to that only. Yeah, there might be some high school kids who come out here and head this way because their car's parked over here. Possibly, but I think there's, can be pretty good separation.
Yeah.
At that end of the site.
Yeah. And you could, would you, could you still continue the Milton High program?
Yeah, that's the other thing, the high school students could still participate in one preschool room as, you know, teacher and trainer.
And I think it's important to remember that the Pierce was built for the team approach. So everybody who's gone into Pierce understands the common areas for each of the three grades. They are rather isolated, other than the core subjects and rural languages.
Well, I'd like to thank you.
Yeah, wow.
That was a phenomenal presentation, and I agree that some of the revisions between the first prelim round and this prelim round are, were welcome and were excellent. I'm fairly certain we will have more questions for you.
Well, several of you were on the facilities advisory group too, so we'll see you next week.
That sounds wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Very helpful.
Yes. Well deserved. So, so I think that leaves us with some, some things to do. I think for the administration, they have some of the educational issues that were outlined there and that we've posed to them and will they ponder.
Be Tuesday morning?
Will they ponder those? I think that would be great. And then between now and the next meeting, as we look at the various options and the realities that they represent, we'll have future discussions based on those. I think we will, at the next meeting, which is two weeks from now, our next meeting, we should try and move the ball forward a little bit on what we consider our preferred or most realistic short-term solutions in the next three years, and whether that involves circling back and having discussions with the building inspector in town, getting some firmer estimates on the cost of modular classrooms, because, and I could be wrong, but my, my looking at this presentation is that in the next three years, we will need additional capacity beyond our square footage to accommodate the students that we will have. That may be permanent space, but I think it is unlikely to assume that what is, in best case scenario, a two-year construction project will be online and running in three years. So, so I think we'll need to try and move the ball forward a little bit on that in the next two or three weeks.
At your next facilities meeting, Ada, are they bringing cost thoughts?
Yeah.
Okay. For a variety of options?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's just for short-term, I think it may be just for short-term.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Solutions.
Short-term, so like the fourth floor at Cunningham.
That will bring them to our next school.
Modular, okay.
So, and, member Ellen, yes.
Yeah, can I, so can I ask for clarification? So when you say for the short term, that would mean, like moving towards the three-year goal of the short, of having something in place for the short term. So that, I guess this is my question, so that would, that would include like, again, I know it, we don't, and it's just short-term, but, but if we do convert the art, the musics, art, music, art, music, art, do something to the libraries, and then perhaps either Cunningham, top floor of Cunningham, or, you know, cost for that, cost for the libraries and cost for what modulators would be, so that we could kind of meet that space need of 19.5 or 18 or 17, you know, whatever.
17, whatever that number is. I think, so looking at the numbers, we have, we have five classrooms that we can, or five spaces that do not impose additional capital costs that we could utilize. Additional three to, depending on the top floor of Cunningham, three to eight, three to nine, that would have sort of medium-range capital costs, and, but that still only gets you, what's that, five plus nine, 16, so that, that's, that's sort of gets us through the next three years, that gets us to, you know, 15, 16 out of 17 for the next three years. But then if you look beyond that, we're talking 20, 22 classrooms, so we're still, at that point, that doesn't fix us, so, yeah.
All right, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So the five classrooms that would be converted, no capital cost for that, and then you're not talking about converting the libraries, though, because that would be a lot of cost and, and that, you can't just do that temporarily.
Right.
Right, so that would be a permanent change.
Can't you do it temporarily, though?
No, because you'd have, you have to do the, they just, maybe they talked about the fire stuff, the, you know, you'd have to reconfigure the whole thing to be the separate classrooms with all the safety features, the air circulation, the sprinkler systems. So that would be a permanent.
Or at least a quasi-permanent.
Quasi-permanent, yeah. And what he was talking about was carving an additional classroom out of those libraries, so not turning the whole library into.
So that's one classroom.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you for helping understand that, okay.
But it would also make these libraries, two of which I know are incredibly small already, so small that I don't, at least in one case, so small that I don't know how you could get an entire classroom in there comfortably and really doing much of anything, so.
Yeah, it definitely sacrifices programming to accommodate numbers.
Yeah.
Can you, can I ask a question on that? Could you ask, could you ask if, if we, I mean, if we did do the library and, so say we do the library and we look about, we ask about the fourth floor, the third, is it the fourth floor of Cunningham?
Fourth.
The fourth, right, top floor, we'll call it top floor. The top floor of Cunningham and what the building inspector would approve or not approve our use of or whatever, and he's, and you said four classrooms there.
Four to five.
Four to five, yeah, like, I mean, say like if we, if things were good, we could actually do five, right? You know, then, I mean, then I'm just thinking like down the road, well, I don't know, probably not, because we still need the classrooms for kids for, for schools, we're still moving forward, I mean, after we, after, so just say, for instance, we do the early education center, and then we move all the Ks, all the pre-Ks, we would still need everything that we've already done, you know, and then, and then the kindergarten classes to alleviate, to have those classes back. So what we do for short-term, we'll continue for the long-term on top of building, like say, just say, like the early ed center, yeah, be permanent.
But I think, but you'd get back the music and art rooms that you had transitioned over to classrooms, you would need still those classrooms at the top floor of Cunningham because you need to reach 25 or to 26, I think is the 10-year long-term goal. So if you had 20 in that early ed center and then the four or five, you'd be almost at that goal for permanent.
So like how much would it cost to break down the classrooms in the library, like, you know what I mean, if we, if there was a way we could just temporarily do it and then, you know.
Well, we moved, we moved the eighth grade to the high school library for a whole year.
I remember, that's when I first moved here, yeah.
When we, every year we moved 1,000 children over the summer in the school building project, and the eighth grade functioned in the high school library for a year.
And just that big giant library?
No, temporary walls.
Yeah, so, right, yeah, so that, we could do that.
For a year.
I would assume, and I'm not a lawyer nor am I a contractor, but I would, I would assume it would be the cost for. would be the cost for doing it plus.
Yeah, breaking it down.
10 or 25% or something, you know, to undo it.
Well, I know everybody here knows this and agrees with this, but on the elementary level, the libraries are so incredibly important. They're spaces, I don't think, I think it's one thing, I love art and music, I was an art history major as an undergrad, not dissing art or music, but we're talking about early literacy, we're talking about developing a love for reading and books and whatever, and I don't think those spaces can be, should be chopped up and turned into really tiny, cramped spaces that kids don't necessarily want to go to or be in or reduce the number of handheld books for these young would-be readers. I, it just, you know, I'm, I'm for so many of these things on this list and I definitely want to explore, you know, every option that's out there, but these are the ones that just turn my stomach.
I'm with you, yeah.
Can I, can I stop the Colicock, I'm sorry. What about that pri, how do you use the private room for future problem solvers there?
Gone.
That's a.
It's a classroom.
I was going to ask, it's already exhausted. All right, I just.
But that's a good question.
Well, no, because that would end up itself, like that could be a classroom and then it's probably gone, but the computer side of it.
Well, when we took all.
You don't need that anymore, right?
When we took all the computer labs away.
From there.
For the total at the Colicock Cunningham was what size? What's the enrollment at the total Colicock Cunningham?
1300.
1300. We do, for 1300, we have left that. We didn't turn that because that would have been construction to turn that into a classroom.
But that, but that's like a computer space, which, like you said, if we're one-to-one, like, and it's, I'm with you 100%. Look at me, I mean, I'm a musical theater teacher and I'm like, hey, I mean, I hate that, I hate the space for that, but, but I'm, and I think, I think, I admit, because my kids lived through it and survived, like, I know it will be okay. I know it will be okay because it's been okay before.
To your point, we only didn't turn that computer lab into a classroom because it would have been construction and I didn't have the money.
And also, the 1909 building was already a building, right? So while it wasn't ideal.
It was disgusting. I mean, disgusting.
I totally get it.
But we went through it.
But what I'm telling you, it was a building that was already there, that had equipped with classrooms, I get it, I get it. Well, I live across the street. The best part was the outdoor classroom that all the parents created and then I love seeing the kids have gym outside with Beth Feige, right? I would watch her have gym outside with them and it was fantastic. That was really, they had.
My dad's first grade room was from that table to here, here to here.
Just saying.
Assistant superintendent Sheehan?
It was a building.
Did you have something you wanted to?
I just wanted to say, I think what I heard was if we had an early childhood center with 22 classrooms, I think I heard 22.
Yeah.
Rather than 20.
Right.
That we may not need 25 in the long-term because it's easier to distribute the children in, you know, a separate center. So that was just something that I just wanted to. The early addition, he said you'd need 22, but what they have in the plan is for 20. He said you could compact to 22, but this would only serve 20 classrooms.
But he said distribute the kids differently.
You just distribute the kids differently, yeah.
I don't know. If you clarify, ask for clarification.
But it, that site won't hold the entire thing unless we rework that.
The 22 is based on, basically transferring to five, five pre-K classrooms to that building and 17 kindergarten classrooms in one space will hold, you know, 400 children, which is what we're currently looking at, 20 classrooms holding across four spaces. It's that economy of scale of putting it in one place. So whereas his plan, five years out, or three years out, is looking for 20 kindergarten classrooms, if they're all in one space, you can get by with 17, just because you, the quick math, you know, 17 times 23, you get your 391 students.
And to Glenn's point, assistant superintendent Sheehan said, which we didn't get in here, you know, we run at the elementary a strand of COTAT where we cap the classes, so, you know, there's some averages there that we didn't even talk about.
That's what I was, I was whispering to Margaret when he was going through the averages and he was saying that some would be as high as 29 and I said, with all the COTAT classrooms, we're already talking about those, those average classroom sizes are substantially higher than, than the numbers that were up.
It's another level of dissertation that might be worth it with this, for us to speak to them, to run parallel, how many, if we ran the COTAT at each grade level, take those numbers out and then average the other. I think that it might be.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Yeah, so maybe when, in the third or fourth iteration, we'll ask him to pull out the COTAT strands at the various levels and do the averages with and without.
We didn't think of that in the first round.
And I know, I know we're close on time, but again, so the 10-year shortfall, 25.5, 22 classrooms a K though, it'd still be okay in 10 years of doing that, rejection once, right?
Yeah, okay.
All right. Well, thank you, that was very productive. Old business, none, citizen's speak topic response, none. Next meeting agenda items, so this.
This.
And more of this. I think, yeah, we may, we'll probably do some vendor warrants, but I think we'll probably have a very limited subcommittee and advisory committee report out, but if there's something that, that needs attention, please email the superintendent, we'll put it on the, on the agenda, yes.
And can I, so we are meeting, so we're meeting three times this month, we're meeting tonight?
Two weeks from now.
Two weeks from now and then on the 23rd, right? And is the, is the 23rd, I know the 23rd is a site visit to Cunningham, this is, you know.
Forum agenda.
But so, but in two weeks, this will be on it, but, so you'll have to report back for further discussion from facilities or is it also going to be an open forum for people to come and talk about space and needs then to, that's my question?
Well.
Because we've already had this and we've had the presentation, again, very preliminary, but, but, you know, people, this will, you know, people watch this. At the facilities committee, is that what you said? No, 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 no.
So you're asking if we're going to have a.
For the Cunningham meeting.
We're going to have, there'll be a forum at the Cunningham meeting, are we going to have a forum next week as well? So two forums in the next two meetings.
That parents could come and, you know, just say, oh, ask questions, just about this, nothing else, but just about this to say, you know, that would be two times this month where. The 16th and the 23rd. Yeah, that we're inviting them to say, and you know, I know it's the site visits at Cunningham, it's just Cunningham or Cunningham Colicock?
Cunningham.
Just Cunningham. To just, now this is out there and because you guys are, and facilities are doing so much work, but the more kind of feedback you can filter in from the community, like you said, I'm just thinking about.
I'm happy, I'm happy to do it. I think it would be, it'd probably be worthwhile. I'll point out for our planning purposes that, so this conversation was essentially a two-hour conversation.
That's what I'm saying, right.
So if we did it, you know.
You put a time limit on it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a fine line between getting public engagement and, because we can't talk about this, you know, beyond here. So.
Couldn't we, so at the, I'm sorry, again, Dr. Brigg.
No, I was just going to say if we, if we truly stick to a time limit for a public forum, maybe.
Like 15 minutes, 20 minutes?
Usually when we say 20 minutes, it goes 45, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, so, you know, to my mind, the, so the issue, the good thing about a public forum is, is we get a chance to do back and forth. The bad thing is that if that, that, you know, if people come and they have their, they want to talk about their concern or their comment, that's a, you know, a few minutes and then all of us, all six of us talking or some of us talking back is another few minutes. So I'm, I'm happy to have a forum, I'm happy to do an extended citizen's speak. If we did a forum, I might encourage, you know, us to be, us to be in response as, as limited as possible, not because we don't want to engage with them, but just to sort of move things along and be mindful of the amount of time that we are taking up in the forum with us talking, if that makes, if that makes sense, yes, remember.
Yeah, and I've also spoken with the PTO presidents and with the administration about starting to do sessions where we go out to the schools and the community groups that want to talk about this and get together input and for them, to inform them about what's going on. So these meetings, our meetings here don't have to be all, it's not going to be all that we're doing to, to get input. And it may give us more time, since we have such limited time together as a group to talk.
Right. Okay. So, sorry, Dr. Brigg, are they bringing, so at the next meeting, which is on January 16th, right? That's when our next school committee meeting is? Are there going to be some cost considerations for the short-term solutions?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay, all right. And then, so at what point in the conversation do you think about cost for long-term solutions?
I think that's, that is, so the cost for the short-term solutions, we're talking about fall of 2020, that we're going to need to do some of this and I think right on the heels of it is the answer to your question.
Right.
You know, within the next several weeks thereafter.
Right. I think, I mean, just my thoughts, I think if we had our next meeting on the 16th and we just had another meeting like this and then the meeting that we're having on the 23rd is going to be at Cunningham where there's an opportunity for parents to come and speak and then I think opportunities to go and speak in smaller groups of the PTO would be helpful because like we don't, we can't talk about this anywhere else amongst ourselves, like so it's just, and then we'll have a better sense of the short-term costs and then perhaps other, you know, if we're exploring other options still in terms of, you know, any rental space or anything else that we might be thinking about, at least we'll have more information to share by the end of January and then plan perhaps other forums and then smaller forums at the schools. That would just be my take on it. I think it's great to have people have back and forth, but I also think we're still like so, I don't know.
Remember.
Sorry, and so just, just from my timeline of understanding, so are we, are you, are we planning now to kind of put a presentation about costs in, what have you, together for the Springtown meeting for short-term and long-term or just spring term or how, we're, what's the game plan on that again, because I just. We're not quite there yet.
Yeah, I don't think we've made that determination, yeah.
The wording of the article so far has the broadest. The broadest, right, right, right. And by the time we get to the end of February, we should know how detailed and what we're presenting, but that's, all of this is to try to put shape on that. Okay. But the goal is to still be at the February time meeting to. Goal right now. And, and, you know, we'll have between now and then to determine, are we ready? Are we ready to go forward with it or do we need more discussion if we not had enough time? We'll have to see.
Yeah. And, and we may, we may end up in a situation where we, you know, just the logistics of financing things, we may end up in a situation where we're addressing the article in February and then, because the finances for this facility are already set, there's no appropriation and then we need to appropriate something for the committee, so we end up doing it again in, in the Springtown, the annual town meeting, so, yes.
Okay, all right.
So why don't we do this, instead of a, instead of a forum at the next meeting, I will, I will plan on having an extended citizen's speak so that there's an opportunity for people to come and, and speak to us.
Makes sense.
And that way we, we limit ourselves so that we can get, we can get through our conversation at that meeting and then we'll plan on further forward forums for.
Okay, that's great, that's great.
And we should have things to report back from additional conversation in the facilities committee also, as well as, hopefully by then we'll have input from administration and leadership team on some of these big, big issue questions that we're looking at.
Okay, yeah, I think the more.
It would be useful for the principals to kind of weigh in. I was thinking to sort of, I mean, they live in the buildings every day, they know how it runs and be interested for them to weigh in on some of the things that we may not know because we're not, we're not there in that way.
Dr. Brigg.
Oh, I was just going to say the more information that I personally have about numbers, cost, the more I can really weigh in on this, because at this point it's all so vague in terms of, I know I'm on finance, but I, I, I think that the costs are going to be incredibly instructive into how we go forward.
I just want to ask, to ask superintendent, so can you, you know, I know you do it in your email last, but also if you can also have each principal put out like the extended citizen's speak at our next meeting and that there would be a forum at the Cunningham, just that added reminder. And sometimes people are like re-energized and paying attention in January, like kind of re-juiced up and.
We'll highlight this in each principal's.
The rest of the year.
All right, thank you. No one's here for citizen's speak at the end, so I will move to adjourn.
Second.
The second, excellent. We are adjourned, thank you.